You've got it.
Voice. All right. Thanks a lot.
You're welcome.
See ya.
Bye.
All right.
Hey Christina.
Hi Jake.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good. Pretty cat behind you.
Oh, thank you. And that's lurking.
Oh, I used to have a cat that looked a lot like that. Same coloration. Great cat.
So we've fostered probably over 150 cats. And when we got him, I've been wanting an orange cat since I was a child because I had an orange cat named Buttercup.
Yep.
And it was like my favorite cat. So when we had that little creature, I was like, sorry. He thinks.
Beautiful.
And he's named, there's a character, like an alien in Marvel movies. And the cat's name is Goose, but it's a flirkin'. So it's a type of alien called a flirkin', so his is lurking goose.
He looked over when you said that, honestly.
Like getting ready to attack me.
Knows his name.
Um, so we're gonna be low on numbers tonight.
Yeah.
But four is still a quorum, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think we're okay. No Carrie's, Carrie will be on. I think she's maybe traveling too, but she'll be on. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get done what we can get done.
Okay, great.
November might be a longish meeting and.
We keep pushing everything.
I know.
No.
I appreciate, I appreciate you remembering that if we can't get the superintendent's award in October, it's better to push.
Yeah.
I let them know so she can get it on her college applications, but.
Great.
That's a, that's a good thing to have in December, actually.
Yeah, and because for whatever reason, November is always a really long meeting and. Um, remember last year I forgot to record it for the superintendent. Oh, um.
Oh, that's right. When Kristen, that's right.
So horrible because for whatever reason Willie Net wasn't on. It was like a.
Yeah.
Things.
Yeah, that was a couple of weird dominoes that we had that last time.
Yeah. My foster cat is outside the door screaming, but I'm afraid if I let him in, he will. Just tear this room apart.
I kept, I kept hearing a cat, but I wasn't seeing the cat on the bed like making any movement like wow, like a ventriloquist cat.
Yeah.
Yeah. So it's funny. I, I have taken a, I think my, you know, my wife got the antibody treatment on. On, on Monday and like between like Monday evening and, and I texted her this afternoon. She's feeling much, much, much better.
Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah. And I, I, I really feel like I took a leap up today too. I didn't have any thing like that, but.
Yeah.
Been feeling much better.
Yeah. Did you finally test negative too?
Yes. Yeah. I've still been wearing my mask. I'm going to wear my mask for the rest of the week when I'm around anybody, but. But I've been consistently testing negative finally, so.
Good. That's always a relief.
Yeah. Yep.
And as you can see, peace.
There they go. Nobody is going to be paying attention to the meeting if, if the wrestling matches. There you go.
I was just at the envisioning Williamstown.
Oh, great.
At the youth center, which is great.
Thank you for doing that, Joe.
Wait, do you have a selfie stick, Joe?
I was just holding my laptop out so you wouldn't get quite as much, you know, here on the, I, I just noticed it was being recorded. So I was like, I'll, I'll be more prim and proper.
Okay. When is our weather supposed to start? That's a.
Any minute now, I, I think. Gosh. The wind's blowing right now. It feels like it's going to be any minute now.
Yeah.
And Jake, I, I had already verified, we're all set with screen sharing being on.
Okay. Yeah. Carol and I did a run through too before she left. So I think we're, I think we're good to go.
What time did you do that? Just out of curiosity?
Um, probably about five minutes after four. I think it was about three minutes before you did it, maybe.
Three minutes before I did it.
What time did you do it?
At like three fifty something.
Oh, okay. So I was after you because I, I was after four. And it looks, it looks to me like it just worked when I tried to do something. So.
Yeah. When I came in, it, it instantly named me as host, which was what it was supposed to do.
Yeah.
But it had not done that previously. So.
Okay.
All right. I'll be right back.
Hi, everyone.
So as soon as Steve joins us, we can get going because we will be missing Jose and Curtis tonight. In theory, we could get started before, but we still have a couple of minutes and I am going to remove this.
Whoa.
Watch your face. Better. Not sure if Steve is going to connect with another device. Steve, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great.
I'm going to have to go to the phone at some point, but I will be present.
Okay. Jake, is everyone here on your end?
Um, we, we, there's Patrick just got on and Jake Schutz. I don't know if Charlotte's, is Charlotte going to be here this evening or not?
That, that was the plan.
That was the plan. I don't see her yet, but she had planned to be here, Jake. Yeah.
Okay. Oh, there she is. Good. Thanks, Jake. Hey, Charlotte.
Okay, since it looks like everybody is here, um, let's get started. I would like to call the Mount Graylock Regional School District School Committee to order. It is Thursday, October 13th, 2022. It is 5:01 PM. We are meeting remotely via Zoom. Uh, the meeting will be broadcast on Willie Net.
That was, that was the only one where I was like.
In Williamstown. Hold on a second. And it will be posted to the Mount Graylock Regional School District YouTube channel within 24 hours of the meeting and on WillieNet.org. Um, if we could please have a roll call vote. Sorry, a roll call?
Here, a bow in here.
Henry here. Green here.
Malloy here.
Miller here.
Yeah. At Mount Graylock Regional School District, our mission is to create a community of learners working together in a safe and challenging learning environment that encourages restorative-based processes, respect, inclusive diversity, courtesy, integrity, and responsibility through high expectation and cooperation resulting in lifelong learning and personal growth. Um, go ahead, Carrie.
Christina, I would just like to ask if we could shift a couple of items on the agenda with the permission or consensus of the committee. So what I'd like to propose is that we move item seven, which is the field and track project committee up just. Uh, below the student spotlight. So, and then to shift public comment below the track and field project. So in other words, uh, number three would be student spotlight. Number four would be field and track project committee. Number five would be public comment.
Okay. Is everyone amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay, great. So that means next on our agenda is the student spotlight and we are going to turn it over to Charlotte.
Hi there. As a quick introduction, I'm Charlotte Hollabar, a first year student on student council and a 10th grader. I'm incredibly excited to have this role and opportunity. So thank you. Um, moving forward, a couple of quick student body updates are our fall Shakespeare play, working with Shakespeare and Co. tonight. And the concert at Mount Graylock at 7:00 PM of our orchestra and band. Additionally, we have the Williams College essay support and college tours through the guidance office, which is incredibly helpful for our seniors. And the PSATs this Saturday, in the, this upcoming Saturday for our sophomores and juniors. The quarter is coming to an end with just two weeks left and the progress reports for students came out of this path, this came out recently. A plentiful level of clubs and sports are on full swing with the girls soccer being staying undefeated in our, on a home football game this Saturday, which is almost unheard of. That goes thing avid on its online articles and a hopeful print edition for the first or second quarter. In student council, we have been attacking a couple of different things like recycling practices and the cell phone policy. For our recycling practices, like this electric car chargers and recycling bins. We've had a recent understanding that our paper and plastic haven't been recycled. But Mr. Schutz has been incredibly helpful and has found a potential solution we hope to further. For the cell phone policy, we've heard about, about this interest in changing the rules and regulations from the administration for students and the council is looking into a couple of different opinions from the internally and externally into the body. There is some interest in having a multi-grade forum during our directed study or lunch, but it's still undecided. I know there hasn't been a student forum in the past couple of years, so we are all really looking forward to potentially having a new thing. For now, this is all I have to say. So thank you for your time and have a great night.
Thank you so much, Charlotte. Um, good to meet you.
I, I have sort of an administrative question. Thank you, Charlotte. Um, but I'm now curious that we have the fall concert and Shakespeare and company and school committee all in one night. And that just, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, I think Shakespeare is rehearsing. Charlotte and Jake can correct me, but I think they're rehearsing. They don't actually have an event, uh, this evening.
It says Fall Festival of Shakespeare at Lennox on our. Um.
Jake, do you want to clarify that, Jake?
I, I'm pretty sure that was the conflicted Carrie, but I'd had, I'd have to double check because. I'm not entirely sure because that's, that's definitely a.
My experience.
But, but typically a lot of our students are. Go ahead, Jake.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Jake. If, if they're in Lennox, it's, it's there to do some specialized training or costume fittings or something. Their performance is not. It's, it will be in November. Um, so I, I think that was a, on the calendar as a heads up for the families that are involved, that, that the kids would have something outside of the district, but I, I don't believe there's anything that, that, uh, that the public was or any of us were invited to.
Sorry about that. I was just going over the calendar.
No, Charlotte, I, I, and Carrie, I think your point about us trying to get so that school committee members who are also parents or simply school committee members and administrators that want to be at events don't have to make these kind of impossible choices. That, that points well taken.
Great. Thank you.
Carrie, so if our mixed up agenda is accurate, now we are going to move to the field and tract project committee.
Great. Thank you, Christina. Um, so I just want to give a brief overview and then we're going to get into picture of the numbers, which will be the fun part. Um, so we've met the field and track project committee has met three times with members from CHA, which are, is our architect and Skanska, which is our OPM. I'd like to introduce Aaron Singer. He's on with us tonight from Skanska. Um, and he's here to answer questions from the committee after Joe, Jake and I present on behalf of the committee. We are half of the committee. Um, we have thought about having Brian Gill and Lindsay Von Holtz um, present to answer questions on behalf of athletics as well, but that would make a forum. So that was not going to work. So we're going to represent the committee for them. That said, um, we looked at, I think, a total of seven different concept drawings um, from CHA and with the help of CHA and Skanska, we proposed some hybrids of those drawings. Um, and what you have before you tonight is a 4B with amendment. So it's sorry, 7B with amendment. So it's really eight, but we had voted it as seven and then we made amendment. So it's 7B with amendments. Um, and it was recommended unanimously by the project committee to the school committee for approval so that we can move to the next phase, which is schematic design. Um. I'm just going to briefly, I'm going to read the purpose of our committee as so eloquently stated by Joe um, in one of the documents that you have in your packet. Um, now I need to find it. I think I Xed it out. Joe, do you have it handy? Oh, I know where I can find it.
Can I actually put it up on the screen so you can, so you can see?
That'd be great. That would be great. Thank you. And apologies for so many documents coming to you. Um, so last minute. Um, you know, we, we just met for the last time on Tuesday. So, um, CHA got us the black and white drawing yesterday and we passed that on to you, uh, with the budget. And they presented the color drawing today and that was best on to as well. So the, the goal of the committee is to, um, come up with a project that is a high-end natural grass playing field. An eight-lane track suitable for hosting three or more team meets. And lighting, if at all possible, for field sports due to an increasing number of evening and double header games. Both via tournaments and regular season games where teams travel from farther distances. I'm going to now turn it over to Joe to run through the design of 4B with amendments. Um, and here's the color drawing actually, which is quite beautiful and it lays out exactly where everything is. I want to emphasize that a lot of what you see here is, um, a, a result of a very, of several very collaborative conversations in this field and track subcommittee with a lot of participation from Brian Gill, who was our track coach. So what we're presenting to you is what we as a committee feel is what the district needs in terms of a track and field project. It is more costly than what we had hoped it would be. But if you could just put the money aside for a moment. Um, and focus on the elements of the project that Joe was going to run through. We'll get to the funding and the money next. Um, so, um. Does that work for everyone to go through the sketches and see what's in the drawing and then we'll go through the spreadsheet? Okay, great. Thank you.
So would you like me to?
Yeah, that would be great.
Sure.
Yep.
So just to provide a little bit of context, um, this new complex that you see is resting behind the school. Um, so um, you see number 19 on the screen here and can you see my cursor right now?
Yes.
Great. Um, so number 19 is the, the barn that is used by the, the Nordic ski team all winter. Um, and by other teams for storage of, of their items in, in other seasons. Um, the administrative building with the public bathrooms that everybody have come to know and love over the last year and a half. Um, used by all of our teams. Um, over here is, uh, the edge of the, the JV softball field and this side right here, that's the backside of the, the main school buildings. As they are at Mount Graylock Regional School. So that provides context for where we are. Um, and it's important because, um, there are numerous constraints that any design team, any programming effort um, needs to fall within and we can talk about those in a second. But, um, if we now move on to the, to the fun stuff and if we start from the center and work our way out, um, we have a new multipurpose field, natural, natural grass. With a great grass surface, uh, drainage underneath that is designed to be very supportive of play soon after rain. Um, irrigation is currently a part of the plan and as we'll talk about that, that does not come without cost. Um, so a field with a, with a great surface that drains well and that has irrigation built in um, to help it stay at the peak playability for as much of the, the year as possible. Um, is at the core here. That is designed to serve, um, girls and boys lacrosse, girls and boys soccer and football, if it, if it returns as a, as a full-time program to Mount Graylock. In addition, it, it could be used for a variety of other, of, of other activities. Um, but those are the primary sports that are, that are planned to be played on this field with dimensions that, that satisfy requests by our coaches for being able to play all of their games, but also host, host tournaments. Um, so that's at the core. And then as we move our way out, we get into an eight-lane track. Um, with all of the field sports also served. Um, so this eight-lane track as currently envisioned um, is a surface that, um, as we've learned with, through the design effort, um, it's kind of in the middle of the pack as far as, um, there are some surfaces that are really designed for Olympic and, and high-end university type competition. There are others that are higher end within college. This is a mainstream high school popular type track surface option as we've, as we've done it right now. And then there are other options that are, um, that are lower end within that spectrum of track surfaces. So that's where we are right now within, within the process, um, with the track. And then on, uh, the west side of the track. Up here as you look, as you go up the hill right now, um, if, if you've ever walked up that way. Um, these are the three throwing sports, discus, javelin and shot put arranged up here so that they can be in close proximity to everything else that's happening. Um, with coaching being able to, to happen right around here. But people are throwing in a direction away, of course, from, from everything else that's happening within. So, um, those are the sports. There is currently within this conceptual design, um, for pole lighting. So we've, we've gone through as a committee and talked about different lighting options, all LED, all energy efficient, modern type lighting. Um, but four pole versus six pole and four pole is something that, um, and when I say four pole, I mean, there are four poles equally spaced around the field. Um, designed to provide even light suitable for competitions on the playing field. Um, those four poles of light, um, are also suitable for, um, people being able to use the track at night. But they are not what a design team or people trying to build a high-end track for um, track competitions in the evening would recommend. They would recommend a six pole lighting setup. Um, so in addition to the one, two, three, four poles that you see here, there would be another one over on this end and a, and a sixth one over here. So that's been a part of the value engineering conversation as we've talked about. Um, frequency of evening competitions and where is light really going to benefit the school the most? So.
And Joe, I'll just add that our track program competes in the spring when we have more sunlight. So, um, the coach did not, Coach Gill did not think that we would have need for a six pole lighting system specifically for evening track.
Um, and then as we move out, um, the, the gray areas that you see here, uh, these are accessible paths for moving um, from bathrooms, the public bathrooms that, that were constructed a couple of years ago up through the complex. Um, this would also be how you would move from the parking lot and the school building up into all of the activities that would, that would be within. Um, so these gray areas are, are walkways and then, um, currently you see a set of bleachers and a press box that are overlaid on top of this gray, uh, concrete pad area. Um, within our current value engineering efforts, we have moved away from 17 being a permanent bleacher, um, seating area and a permanent press box, um, due to cost concerns. And so the, the current plan as voted by the committee is to move in the direction of pouring this pad. Um, making it very suitable to portable bleachers and a portable breast, press box. They could either be purchased right at the outset or it could be purchased, um, through fundraising as we, as we move through the initial life of the, of the complex. Now I'm sure, oh, and then, um, 14 on the end here, um, this is scoreboard that's currently envisioned. Um, again, through, uh, the efforts of the committee, this is currently envisioned as a multi-sport scoreboard. Um, suitable for all the sports that would be on the field. Um, the, the budget necessary to add a full eight-lane track type time scoreboard, um, that, that was viewed as being perhaps too costly. Um, and the, the track coach Brian Gill, uh, has, has also noted that with the various modern systems that we have. Um, people are actually tracking scores and, and results in real time via mobile phones with, with data coming in that way as opposed to trying to get all of the data from a track and field meet up onto a board, um, that would cost $75,000 or so. So, um, I have summarized things perhaps too quickly, but I didn't want. I have summarized things perhaps too quickly, but I didn't want to chew up too much time with annotating a diagram that we all have.
So are there questions just on the layout? And I'll just say that we, there was an effort to shift the track and the field to the right as you're looking at the diagram in order to put the field sports to the left of the track and field, but that shifted it too far from the restrooms and would have caused an extra cost in terms of building public restrooms. There is of course a cost in terms of grading the area where the field, where the throwing sports are now and the ADA pathway. But it is less than the cost of grading the left. The other thing I would say is that Joe, if you could move your cursor to the left of the, yeah, so this is meant to be sort of a viewing area, right? A grassy viewing area. There's another area up top, that's a grassy viewing area. So even though we would only have seating from portable bleachers on one side, there would be plenty of grassy areas around the track where people could set up chairs for tournaments, there is plenty of space to set up tents for the different teams on the fields to the right of the above and I believe to the right, if we were hosting a tournament, we would be also using that area. So that served a lot of needs. The lighting, as you'll see, is a significant expense, but because we play the field sports in the fall, they do get the area gets quite dark even before the baseball fields. And with our playing with Pioneer Valley now, we play games later in the evening. So the sense was that without the lights, the field is really not usable for the needs of the district. So you'll see that kind of detail when we get into the budget. Before we get into the budget, Joe, do you want to talk about the Williams Fund and what we have available to us?
Yes. So we just today got updated numbers from Williams College. It uses a fiscal year similar to ours and that they put a pin in the value of their endowment as of July first of each year. So as of July first of twenty twenty-two, the gift from Williams College and Mount Greylock Regional School had a value of just a little bit shy of four million dollars. And then in order to get as accurate a sense of what we currently have here in mid-October, the payments that have gone out from that gift related to the facilities barn as well as payments related to the ADA and safety project that we continue to close out in on the south side of campus. We've put a hundred and two thousand dollars out of the gift since July one and we have a little bit under three hundred thousand dollars in commitments that the school committee has already made using the gift, both to close that project out as well as some of the equipment that is on order for being able to mow and maintain the grounds at Mount Greylock Regional School. So if we take all of those into account, we're looking at right around three point six million dollars in remaining value. With the big asterisk that that is subject to investment fluctuation. So what, I mean, we started, I think it's wonderful to note that we started years ago with five million dollars. And we have spent considerable sums of money upgrading the Mount Greylock Regional School campus since then. But we still magically have four million dollars and that is because this money has been invested over those years and because the college's endowment has grown. And so that's the positive that we still have four million dollars left. The flip side of that is we need to be cognizant of what might be happening in the market since July one and what will happen between right now and when we make requests to the college to try to liquidate and create a very reliable sum of money available to us. Now, there is no indication that that has dipped significantly. I'm not saying that, but we do need to be mindful that we need to acknowledge that and navigate it as we go through the next year. And the school committee also and somebody might need to help me out, some number of months ago, a year and a half ago, had cast a vote to reserve one million dollars in the gift for building renewal purposes for Mount Greylock Regional School. So the three point six million dollars is subject to that school committee vote and investment fluctuations. So Carrie, that's
And I'll just, yeah, so I'm gonna just say that that vote can be any more recent vote will take precedent over, that's not the right word, but we're not bound. All right, so I'll just say that we're not bound by the previous vote. That vote did express the will of that particular committee, so it's not to be ignored. And it really does serve a purpose to keep, you know, money in a renewal fund. But we as a committee are not bound to do that. So technically speaking, there is in this snapshot enough to cover this project. But there are also other ways to cover parts of this project. And so we've talked about that a lot. And what I'd like to do is actually go through the spreadsheet and then after that, talk about some of the ideas that we've been floating in terms of how to cover parts of the project. And Joe, remind me, is the FFNE in the budget right now in the spreadsheet? Okay. Great. Aaron, do you want to add anything at this point before we go into the spreadsheet?
I think we go into the spreadsheet and we can extrapolate on afterwards.
Okay. Let's do it. A lot of work has gone into this. I want to just acknowledge Joe's work on this as well as Aaron and John Benzinger and obviously the staff from CHA as well.
We've had a really great team working hard together for the last bunch of months on this. It's been, it's been great so far despite the fact that potential cost estimates here are not what anybody wants. But and Carrie, this is a spreadsheet that we wanted to bring up.
Yes.
So just to give you a sense of what this means, right now in the process, the school district, its coaches, the project committee gave CHA and Skanska the three hundred and sixty degree view of what is desirable to have on campus within the scope of a field and track project. And CHA then turned around and they said, all right, I'm gonna satisfy what you want. And they created a series of conceptual designs with a variety of positions of items, a variety of walkways, a variety of ways to try to approach what we did. They also went out and they said, given the components that you want in this project, the length of walkway that we need, the type of field that you want to build, the type of track that you want to build. They went out to a professional estimating team that knows current market conditions, has relationships with vendors. And they said, given all of the different components that we've put into line items here along with some extra detail that you don't see here, tell us what you think each one will cost if we take this out to bid over the next few months. And so what we have here are estimates done for the team so that we can start to understand what this might cost when we do take it out to bid in a few months. So it is important to note, this isn't a quote, this is not some kind of a contract that anybody would be signing on to. These are estimates to help us understand what we need to do to get to a good end when the bids come in and we're able to say, now let's move to the next phase of the project and actually start construction.
If I could just stop you for a second. I think it's also worth pointing out that there is no commitment of money tonight. So if you were to approve this concept, you're not committing to spend anything. All you're doing is committing to send it on to the next stage. So which is schematic design. I'm just realizing we don't have a motion on the table. Should we do that and then proceed with this or should we do that after we go through the spreadsheet?
Do we have something from the finance committee that could be discussed or was that not a motion that was just a discussion from the finance?
Yeah, it was just a discussion.
It's just a discussion.
We weren't able to move it. The finance committee did did approve the both a budget and the, well, actually, I'm not sure you even saw the drawing at that point. Finance committee, the finance committee did see the budget and we were all in agreement that this was something worth pursuing for the school committee, but we didn't have a vote on our agenda, so we didn't have a motion. The project subcommittee did have a vote and did move to recommend it. So maybe that's a motion on the floor of the committee. So that would just need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay.
But it might be safer to have somebody just to make sure to have a motion. So I'll officially make a motion just for
Okay.
I can second.
Great, thanks Julia. All right, now we're official.
All right, so in order for us to the estimates for us to construct what you just saw in the latest conceptual diagram involve the following. And at a top level, it's about a three point five million dollar project as it's currently scoped out. Five hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars of that are soft costs, are costs associated with our project management team, our design team, the various material testing that we're required to do, drilling a test well, things that are not within the scope of a contractor who'll bid, who will then execute on the construction related to the project. And I said soft costs, but soft costs plus the fixtures, furniture and equipment commonly called FFNE that would be a part of the project, primarily this hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar piece here. That's all the loose track equipment, the hurdles, things like that, that you need to purchase and keep on site. That is stuff that the school district in collaboration with Skanska and CHA would go out and purchase directly outside of the scope of what a contractor would be saying, here's my contractual amount. So now if
It is also, can I just say that that one twenty-five K is also an example of what could be fundraised? Okay, so that's, just keep that in mind. We'll just point those out as we go along that we've already highlighted that as a possibility for fundraising.
So now if we take each section in turn, the section one point O things, that's what you would think of as being, they bring in the bulldozers. They shape the area so that it's ready to then build upon. And then once you have done your construction, it is when they say, all right, you know, like you now have your hill here for seating. You now have areas that are graded properly for people being able to use wheelchairs or to walk up comfortably. That's what the demolition and earthwork section is. And it is not a component of the project that if we're going to build a track and a field in this location, that's not a component of the project that we're going to heavily value engineer out. So these are costs that are fairly fixed.
We are hoping to use everything that is currently on site. So it's just a matter of moving earth rather than bringing earth in. That's the goal.
Then site work, all the asphalt walkways, anything that we do once the project is being closed up to seed or plant trees in the area outside of the track to beautify that area as well as some items that we have started to talk about value engineering out of the project in order to be able to fund the project. And so it might be helpful at this point to note that items in green, we viewed as not being value engineering candidates. You can't have a project without these things in green up above. You can't have a project without accessible walkways to be able to get someone from the opening of the complex to the various endpoints where they need to be able to participate or view participate in or review an event or a sport. Blue, we're going to talk about in a little bit, relate to bleachers and press box, that general category of things. Orange, yellow, whatever that color was, is, these are areas where we said we can value engineer these. We can talk through the ways that we can try to scale these back in order to have a project that we can execute. So some areas like a new flagpole with nice uplighting. CHA said that's a fairly standard part of a project. We said, well, it's seventeen thousand dollars, seventeen five hundred. Maybe we can add it later, maybe we can use a portable, maybe we can figure out how to make use of our existing flagpole in situations where we really want to use, we're looking over top of the building. So these are areas right now where you see some original costs and you see where we've taken them. And you also see the notes indicating what happened there. So VE is value engineer. So we value engineered out a modular block retaining wall that would have served as a beautiful place for seating on the outside of the track on one side of the track. We said, we'll just have people seated on a grass hill instead on that side and there will be bleachers on the other side. So as we transit down through that section with a fair amount of value engineering done so far, then you get into
And we, sorry, I'm just gonna point out that two point O six and two point O seven are possible candidates for community resources, right? We have resources within the community that might be able to help us with some of this landscaping around the, around the project.
Then we move into the three point O section, which is the multipurpose field on the interior of the track. This, again, there was nothing within this this series of items that we viewed as being responsibly value engineered. One that was discussed was the difference between having a sodded athletic field or growing that field from seed. Sod has two benefits that we all agree on. One is that you're able to get on it faster, which is nice, but if the cost difference is significant, maybe it makes sense to wait. The other was the more weighty one, which is by bringing in sod, you're bringing in great dense grass surface from the get-go. If you're trying to grow from seed, you're going to be heavily amending and watering and really trying to monitor that grass on a daily basis, which would add its own costs and probably create its own conditions where things would be subject to a lot of variability. And so bringing sod in felt like it needed to be one of those green items. The cost difference just for the school committee members, ninety-six thousand dollars for sod, it would be about thirty-six thousand dollars if we grow from seed, but that does not take into account the loads of watering and amendment that would need to happen to really get a dense surface within a year. Track and field, so this is the track and then all of the field and throwing sports that are around it or in the interior of it. Here, a number of items in green are basic items that we're not going to value engineer out if we're going to have an eight lane track and the field sports. The one that was subject to value engineering is, are these three rows that I've now highlighted. Where, as I talked about at the at the outset, there there's a spectrum of of track surfaces that you can have. This one's kind of right in the middle and it's very suitable to a a good quality high school. It isn't a super end high school, a super high end high school, and it's not a college level surface. But it's it's a good durable surface that people will be happy to compete on for many years to come. So it's called a base mat spray on top of on top of the the binder course and the surface course underneath that.
So we did talk about also the long term maintenance of the various surfaces. And this is not only less expensive from the outset, but it's less expensive in terms of applying the the coats. Each coat is supposed to last eight to 10 years, and you can recode it twice, I think. The other thing is this pole vault box, which happens to be highlighted right now, or 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 at least it's in blue on my screen. We don't pole vault at Mount Greylock, but we do pole vault in, or the the, I guess, the the competitions involve pole vault vaulting, so we can't not have a pole vault box, even though we don't pole vault in the district.
All right, then we start to move down into utilities. This, this is an area where, as we talked about the utilities that are here within the 5.0 section, as well as other utilities that are under additional items in the seven point section. These are items where, as we've looked at value engineering, we have tried to make sure that we don't, for instance, value engineer out conduit and cable where, in order for us to put a different type of scoreboard in later, we would need to tear up the track in order to do that. So we've tried to make decisions where we protect for the future, but we minimize present day costs where possible. As we look at these utilities, a lot of these speak to things like wiring to prepare for lighting, wiring to prepare for sound and PA type system, wiring to prepare for internet connectivity and being able to have Wi-Fi and being able to have people getting track results and track results communicated around. Things like that are built into all of all of these, all of this utility area. That said, the the scoreboard was an area where the original cost that we were looking at, cost estimate, we were looking at both multi-sport scoreboard as well as a track and field scoreboard. So that original cost was around $105,000 if we wanted to go that route. Right now, what we have in place is a $30,000 line, which would be a multi-sport scoreboard similar to the one that we have at John T. Allen Field right now for the multiple sports that are played there. And
There's such a variety of scoreboards. You know, I think it was CHA that basically said, just tell us how much you want to spend on a scoreboard. And we'll, you know, find something that fits within that. But that's also something that we can decide later. We're just putting in a placeholder for that.
Yeah, so it's to this $30,000 item, as of right now, this is a scoreboard similar to the one that we have. And and it's also something that that is a fundraiser friendly type type item within the current cost estimate. Then we move into the 7.0 section, which, within original cost estimates, was viewed as being, these are add alternate items. As you'll see right here, we we label these as additional items and the field and track project committee right now does not view these as being add alternates. They view it as being integral to having a complete project. So that's why they're kind of, the categorization goes a little bit wonky here. That's why, that's the way it is. But I'll walk you through these various colorized sections, just so you can you can get a feel for them. So things that are in red, relamping John T. Allen Field, moving from the current lights to LED lights, that was a request. But the $175,000 cost within value engineering was deemed as just being too much to have within the scope of this project. Similarly, the three rows down below here that are in red, these were items related to requests to figure out what it would cost, what it would take to improve three of our current playing fields. And each of these line items was related to stripping the field, regrading it, and then putting sod back down or or seed, depending upon the field. And so these were, again, items where we said, if our priority is to get this new track and field done, we can't have these in the project right now, but it's good to know the cost estimates for ballparking what what it will take if we want, in the long, long run, try to try to upgrade the entire campus in the way that people have requested. Now, jumping back up, purple is lighting. This is where the committee has gone through numerous discussions around six pole versus four pole. The current cost estimates you hear are for a four pole lighting system. And it's $400,000. So it's a it's a big chunky cost within the project. It is possible to run conduit to the places where you would install lighting in the future. But the the estimate around an estimate, if we decide to try to add lighting five years from now, is that because of the way foundations need to be poured, poles need to be set, and a lot of that is specific to whichever vendor ends up winning a bid to be the lighting vendor at the time. It would probably cost about 150% of this cost if you said a month after the project was done, oh, now great, now now let's add lighting. Because of the way that you would need to disturb the surface, bring in cranes, try to get down and and do that work. So for a couple of different reasons, both for the need to be able to host evening games often, as well as the potential for what it would cost if we try to do it later. We have currently kept this in as a $400,000 cost that we highly recommend keeping in the project. Carrie, was there anything that I missed there?
No.
So now we're now we're in blue, bleachers and press box. So we we took a look at the the spectrum of options that exist for bleachers and press box. And at the end of our meetings, we agreed that we should value engineer down to pouring the concrete pads that will allow us to place portable bleachers on, place portable press box on, that would need to be fundraised. Portable bleachers can can cost, depending upon how many seats you want and and the height that you want, anywhere from $15,000 up to $60,000 or $70,000. A portable press box of the type that we're looking at would cost $25,000 to $35,000. Those costs are not in this project. They're viewed as being things that we can always purchase them later. We can purchase them through fundraising as we move through the project period and have them there just in time. But we don't need a contractor bidding to include those in the scope of what they're doing and marking it up and having us be committed at the outset in that way. So this is the maximum flexibility option that we that we wanted to recommend. The gray areas
Sorry, the only thing to add is that we should pick out the bleachers that we're going to use before they pour the pad because they're going to pour the pad according to the size of the bleacher. So, you know, that's something that we would just, I think, purchase as a district, but then let them know what size pad we need.
We can, and if if we want to maintain flexibility to be able to do that later, we can also just make sure that we that we evaluate all the different options. And then we pour a pad that is definitely as large as what we would, what we would go with. Our seating, the number, the the amount of seating that we would bring onsite eventually is dictated by the number of bathroom, the number of stalls that we have in our bathrooms. So that's a consideration as well. So it's not only how far can you be from the bathrooms with your planned seating, but also how many seats can you have? That's dictated by the number of bathroom stalls that you have.
And is that number 300? Is that the number we're working with?
It was 350, oh, so 300 and 300 feet from the bathrooms is where you need to have that that's the maximum for your planned seating. I believe the bleachers, was it 350, 380? Aaron, we can
Right now, the design value, we're working at 330 total seats.
Okay.
That'll allow us to use the bathroom infrastructure that's already in place on campus.
Great. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you, Aaron. All right. So then we move into this gray section of utilities and sound. And this is an area where we're going to continue discussions as we move into greater detail with the design. But the current goal with the costs that you see here are to make sure that we've got the conduit, make sure that we've got the cables, make sure that we're ready for things. But to not put $50,000 into a a great PA and sound system as a part of the project. But this is, and I think this is one of those areas that is subject to a lot of the, what Carrie had said at the, as we started this section of the presentation. We've got a lot of work left to do over the next few months before this even goes out to bid, much less before the school committee commits to a contract. And so there's a lot of value engineering and detail conversation to have. We're just trying to make sure that with the estimates that we're presenting tonight, we've got the ballpark understood enough that we, as a group, now have months to say, how can we fund this? What are we going to do? Can we fund it? We don't need to make those exact decisions tonight. There's plenty more work and plenty more opportunity ahead. End line netting, this was originally within the add alternate section, but for safety reasons, we really view it as a green item, a must have type item. This is netting that that will go up back behind especially lacrosse goals to protect people who are on the track or who are down in the softball fields from errant lacrosse balls flying and and doing any harm. Then in blue, the irrigation system, and this is something where there's a lot of potential cost variability. And I I think everybody involved in the project, there's a $75,000 number here right now. But as we move through the next few months, that 75,000 could look more like 150,000. So we're really, we're trying to push on that to understand better what it might cost, because irrigation for the field and hopefully for other fields on campus, enough enough capacity to be able to do some things in other areas of the campus are critical to getting through drought gaps and still having great green grass. But perhaps more importantly to those of us who are going to need to maintain these fields for five, 10, 15, 20 years to come, irrigation is the key to being able to do field renovations, to be able to say, gosh, that that area in front of the goal mouth was really beat up. We need to be able to spend time seeding or bringing in a little bit of sod to to patch that up to make it look great again. If you don't have the ability to irrigate, if you don't have the ability to water it, you're not going to be able to do that. And it's one of the things that keeps us as a team right now from being able to do even more significant improvements to our existing fields than the ones that that the that the grounds team has been able to do, which which have been amazing in and of themselves. But irrigation is a key to being able to do that. And so right now, we have it built into the project there. Then, as you go down through, there are the various contingency, these these percentages that add up to 23% on top of expected base bid. Some of these items, as we get closer to bid time, the the contingency amounts hopefully will not be used and they will disappear as costs because the design team will say everything that we were envisioning here is coming true. We don't have any sewer pipes that need to be replaced that we didn't think would need to be replaced. So, you know, things like that, where where we can move from, hopefully, 233,906 down to zero as we as we get close to bid time. Others, other things, like the 8% general conditions, those would be costs that presumably a contractor will say, like, yeah, I I understand. You know, I've done my own estimation so that I can put my bid in and I'm adding this general conditions on top so that I'm protected when I bid. But these are numbers that are subject to some amount of variability, same as estimates are in terms of their accuracy and and how that will play out. But as of right now, we're trying to get as good of a sense upfront, months ahead of when we would actually go out to bid, what this might cost. And that's how we get, once we add all of the numbers that you just saw, along with all the soft costs and and the FFNE and all the contingency, that's how the current estimate gets up to that $3.47 million number.
Thank you, Joe. That was a lot of great information. Aaron, do you have anything to add to that, or should we move to questions from, or actually Joe?
The one thing that I would add to it, Carrie and Joe, and you know, thanks for your presentation. You guys have been an incredible team to work with, that what we're doing with the district is we're also spending time with CHA to make sure that when this does go out to bid, the spec that the contractors are looking at to determine their pricing, we're making sure it's an open spec, something that we're not locked into specific brands like Musco Way, and we're making sure that we're going to field quotes that are quality products, but we're not naming specific vendors that we want to use, which also puts a little bit more financial relief on the project. You get a lot of other competition coming in, and it can help with the overall budget.
Thanks, Aaron. Joe, do you want to move to the pie chart, actually?
Sure.
Just another graphic for you guys. Well, while he's finding that, are there questions? Julia, yeah.
And before we really get to the numbers, I was just curious on the lighting, since that's a potential place of savings potentially. What are we doing now when we can't host things at night? Because we don't have lighting.
We, well, we have lighting on John T. Allen.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
And is that pretty standard across all our local districts, that there's lighting on the fields that for night?
That I, yes, yes, yes.
Aaron, have you done any projects where there hasn't been lighting?
Only for practice fields, Carrie. In the practice field, you don't, you're less concerned with night play. It's definitely something you want to have. It makes the school a lot more appealing for visiting games schedules. It's easier on parents. The games can go later and it's better for the this entire sports program.
Thanks. Okay, so here's the spreadsheet we just looked at in another, in visual form, just to give you a sense of what is dominating in terms of cost. So you can see, oh, go ahead, Joe.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say that the lighting and the soft costs are, you know, significant. But we're really hoping, you know, that's where the discussions of fundraising have come in, you know, and of course, the the scoreboard was another one. And the press box. So the soft cost being all the equipment for the track and the field sports. It's, it it really allows for a lot of creative conversation, and I think there's a lot of opportunity there out in the community to think about ways that we can make this project happen without necessarily taking away or eating up all of the the fun that we have or the the money, the stuff we wanted to save for for renewal.
Yeah, and the the other value of this pie chart, I think, is to show that if we want to value engineer things out, or if we want to move things to add alternate status, add alternate, meaning we we've got a base thing that contractors are going to bid on. They're also going to say, oh, and if you want this other thing added on to the project, here's what it will cost to give the district some flexibility and saying, well, I definitely need the base. And if the pricing comes in the right way, I'll add this next layer of And if the pricing comes in the right way, I'll add this next layer of the onion peel into the project as well. We've had difficulty honestly as a as a committee to identify big block items that we can potentially say, this one's just an add alternate, like if 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 the bids don't come in under X dollars, then we'll just leave it out. Because we're going to have trouble further value engineering the track and and the field sports. The multipurpose field, we're building the 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 field that everybody has requested, which is a highly playable natural grass field. It's not the highest end. It isn't a sand based thing that the minute it rains, all the water disappears, but you need to go out and trim each blade of grass with scissors, otherwise the grass ties. It's not that high end of a field. But it's a very good quality field with great drainage and irrigation. The lighting, you know, we've talked about how lighting feel like that's kind of a natural, well, can we have it as an add alternate? In reality, when we talk about what we would do as a school district, we'd be moving some decent number of games over to our old John T. Allen field because they would run right into lighting conditions, conditions that require lighting. Especially right now, you know, soccer games are being played where a good half of the game at least, even with a late afternoon type game, is being played in conditions where lighting really helps or is necessary. And we've still got hopefully another month left of of competition. And then soft costs, those are ones where embedded within this is the FFNE where we can potentially take some track components and figure out how to purchase things later or use things that we already have or try to borrow or or I won't say steal, but whatever it is, try to be able to.
Those costs. Borrow, steal, yeah.
You know, the earthwork, we talked about how that's just laying the the ground, there's no, there's nothing fancy built into this. Accessible walkways, they're required. We can't say, well, we'll just have walkways later. So we're trying to take that full, that three hundred and sixty degree view of all the different items. I think we are going to continue to whittle some down. We're probably going to find some items where they're going to cost more than than what we had originally seen estimates for. So we're trying to start to prepare ourselves for, as we get into greater detail, how can we go about funding this whole project? Because we don't view fluff in here by any stretch. So. Julia? Yep.
First, let me just say thank you to you guys and your committee and to our professionals who've been supporting this work. This is fantastic information and I really appreciate all the ways in which you just described, this does not include fluff, like you've already done a ton of value engineering to get it to be as as affordable as possible. And that, I guess, is my, I want to make sure I'm understanding the affordability questions here, which or maybe make them explicit, at least for myself, to make sure I'm understanding them correctly. I think I'm hearing that currently the projected cost is the same as the total Williams gift assumed value. So one question I have about that, I've got a series of questions, so apologies. One question I have is, the market has tanked since July one. Do we have any sense of how the college has invested that money? Because they may have been wise enough to put it into treasury bonds or something, I don't know. But do we, is that is that real money even, given how much the market has tanked?
I think that at the school committee's request after this meeting, if it's one of the things that the school committee would like to consider is we can reach out to the college and say, the school committee is considering using much of this gift, some some amount, and it doesn't need to be set, but can we start to evaluate options explicitly for what can be liquid? Where do we currently stand? How can we, if we know that construction is going to be happening next spring, summer and early fall? What's the most responsible way to to get a get a set value here? I would, I would love that as a directive. I just don't want to go off and tell the colleges that I'm thinking about liquidating the gift and have them say, on whose authority are you?
Yeah, sure enough, fair enough, fair enough. Okay, as as somebody who so so best case scenario right now, the Williams gift is what we, you know, the current projection. And and this is a wash. I am somewhat, the wash would be the whole project that gets funded by that. And we've got nothing left. I am someone who really believed and believes in holding that one million back. And so for future facility needs. So I'm curious. One, and I, and this is again for my clarity, and I'm sorry for always asking these kinds of questions, but we have other, there's no other pocket of funds with our various savings that we build up from, you know, other all those other buckets, none of those work, is that right?
We can potentially use other revolving funds that we have for portions of what we're talking about here. So our excess and deficiency, our tuition, our school choice, there are things that we can select here that that can legally be be funded out of those. And I think that's a discussion that the school committee should want to have over the next few months as well, like what, to what extent can we draw from those funds? So that we're keeping money growing within the gift.
Yes.
Yeah.
The timing of that is also a little bit tricky because we're trying to preserve the E and D for when we go out to bond the you know, the school, you know, school debt. So we just need to be careful.
Yeah. Okay.
The or just on that topic, the vast majority of money will flow to the contractor over the course of July, August, September of next year. So once they're able to say, we are a certain percent complete, that's the point where we're going to start to see big chunks of this going out, which if they start construction in, and Aaron might might have more knowledge here, but if they start construction in in April, we might see a first request in late May, mid-May, which we could comfortably fund out of non, say, excess and deficiency type type funds. So we could figure out how to make that timing work. But again, it is to some extent a question of which piggy banks do we feel most comfortable emptying and why?
Yeah. The amount of funds that could potentially be I I heard potential fundraising for parts of the FFNE. There was ten K, I only wrote down the numbers for two point oh six and two point oh seven, the scoreboard and maybe the lighting. That, is that the total of the things where there's a belief there could be some fundraising?
Oh, there, there are a number of things. There's probably a handful of things that we could potentially fundraise for. There, we also talked about grants, private donors, GoFundMes. You know, you could imagine the the alumni of the track and field program contributing to, you know, buying hurdles and buying, you know, whatever yeah, equipment is needed for the throwing sports and that kind of thing. So I think that's just a matter of, as Joe said, doing the work. Like, we need to to do the work out in the community and.
So, so I guess I I just want to share, having come from a education job where I had to do significant fundraising. It's hard.
It is hard. No, I know. And I'm doing, I'm in the middle of doing this for another nonprofit, another nonprofit.
Yeah.
It takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. You got to believe in what you're doing in order to make it happen.
Yeah, yeah. So so for me, anyway, I don't, I don't see us somehow raising a million. I would love to be proven wrong, love to be proven wrong. But it feels hard. I mean, that's not money we could count on. Right, like, right, it make, I mean, obviously, tonight's vote isn't that we're committing any money, but tonight's vote does move us forward again. So I just want to be cognizant of the fact that fundraising is a hope.
And yes, absolutely, which is why we want to know that we have actual funds available to us without fundraising.
Right.
Before we move forward and we're not really moving forward yet into spending anything or committing us to anything. I would just also point out that E and D is a renewal fund to some extent. I mean, that's what it's designed to be if we need a new roof or we need, I mean, that's it's a reserve fund for those kinds of expenditures. So we, if we did retain a renewal fund from the Williams gift, we would have two renewal funds. And that's a lot of renewal fund, but that's a, you know, that's a school committee preference. Steve?
Yes, I was just going to say briefly, as you mentioned that that would be a second renewal fund for us, but we have to remember what the purpose of the gift from the Williams, from Williams College was. We have seniors who are about to graduate who are in elementary school when we started having these field discussions. And so it's nice to be talking about having a project coming to completion that our kids will be able to use and enjoy for decades to come. We've gone through so many times of trying to bid this project. And what happens is we keep spending money on studies. And so we've also hit the Williams College gift for many things over the last couple of years that really should have been sent to the towns. And so I think it's important to remember that, well, I want to keep as much money as possible in the gift fund where it's riding with the endowment. We have several options. We have the E and D fund, which we can use before the big bills start to arrive. We have the ability to ask the towns if they want us to take out you know, loan, you know, similar to the other construction to leave the money in. We have the ability to do, you know, some small fundraising. I want to just, you know, commend the people who have spent a tremendous amount of time. And this goes back from the conversations we've had on what kind of turf to have to all the value engineering decisions right now. You, all this work to try to get, you know, the right thing for our kids. You know, I think we can find a way to fund, you know, a good system. So thank you.
Thanks, Steve. So decision points. Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, so just to put what we're doing tonight in the context, we're at step one here as far as school committee decision points that this is. If if you vote in favor tonight, this would simply trigger the design team saying, all right, so we we know where we want these things. You know, we've moved the blocks around on the screen and we've done our studies to understand elevation changes and what's practical with walkways and all of that. Saying yes tonight is saying to them, now apply all of your resources into getting all of the details done so that the design is done at a great level of detail, ready for plenty of more decision making. And getting ready for for bid documents to go out. So that's what would happen tonight is we'd say, yep, if if we're going to move forward with the project, this is the one we want to move forward with in terms of high level design, please keep on working and make it more detailed. Step two is saying, great, now you've turned this one diagram into a layer of ten different diagrams and plenty of descriptive detail so that we can understand each aspect here. You've continued to refine your estimates, you've continued to get to the point where you are ready for us as a school committee to say, great, now take that and convert it into the massive stack of paper that a contractor would need to go through in order to accurately bid the project. So the next vote by the school committee is to move from schematic design into bid document development. The third would be, and this is one where where my recommendation to the school committee would be to leave this third one up to the track project, the the field and track project committee, but to then go through the hundred and something page document and say, yep, all of this correlates with the schematic design, just as you professionals say it does. Go on ahead and put that out on the street and have contractors bid on it. You know, that's releasing the bid documents to the contractors. Then after that, school committee comes back in and says, all right, here are the hopefully twenty different, that's not realistic, twenty companies are not going to bid on this, but here are the twenty people who all gave your best pricing and their best pricing and because you're, you put it out to bid in the way you you have to in Massachusetts. Here's the lowest one and just yes or no, are we going to accept the bid and move forward with the project? Or are we going to say, which the school committee has done a couple of times already. No, this just came in way higher than we thought it would. We can't do it. We're going to back off and we're going to regroup. Regroup by rebidding or modifying the design. So where we are tonight is is step one, and there are a bunch more points before we ever get to that approve or disapprove of a contractor's bid on it. And Aaron, did I misspeak at all there?
No, you've hit the nail on the head with every comment along the way, Joe.
Thanks.
You guys are, I gotta say, you're a great committee to deal with and a great committee to listen to as well.
You've been good partners. So so I I just took another look at the school committee agenda and authorizations for the subcommittee are on the agenda and Joe is recommending that we as a committee only authorize bid documents to be determined by the subcommittee. But I'm also seeing that there is not actually a vote on the agenda for authorizing the project to move from conceptual design to schematic. So that's a bureaucratic problem. Don't know how to solve that. Yeah, Julia?
I'm just wondering if that agenda is subject to interpretation because I assumed when point B and point C were kind of together.
It's a reasonable assumption. It may may or may not pass the litmus test. I don't know.
This is Steve. One other item. I don't know if this works here, but we did talk in the past about the school committee deferring to the subcommittee. If there is unanimous support on the subcommittee.
Right. And so that's why we put it on the agenda, Steve, because we we actually when we voted to set up the project, the track and field project subcommittee, we didn't vote authorizations. We didn't vote not to authorize, but we didn't specifically vote authorizations. So the school committee could say, well, the subcommittee already voted it, we approve it, but there's a motion on the table. That's what I'm asking. There's a motion on the table. And there is not a vote per se on the agenda unless you interpret B and C to be together. The purpose of C was to ask the committee, what authorizations do you want to give to this subcommittee? Yeah, Julia?
So should that have read authorizations for the subcommittee? That's, I think, why I thought it was for the school committee, not this, not the subcommittee. Just to further the point that I think these are, I think my interpretation could stand.
I don't know. I'm going to defer to the chair on this. Sorry, Christina. I missed the agenda meeting because I was on mountain time. And nobody called me, you guys, you need to call me when I don't show up for a meeting. Anyway.
I mean, I I sort of agree with Julia's interpretation and could we move forward the way it is? Ask for forgiveness later if it's not accurate. I guess it's sort of my thought.
So you could combine. Go ahead, Steve.
Can we move forward with it and say? Can we move forward with it and say that this is subject to legal counsel confirming this interpretation?
That's fine, but I was also going to say we could amend the we could amend the C, the vote to include C, which would be authorizing the subcommittee to move forward with the design and to approve the documents. And then it's all one vote.
Does that work for Julia and Steve?
Sorry, do you mean amend the motion to say to, to approve the committee moving from concept to schematic design?
Right, the subcommittee moving from concept to schematic design and the subcommittee approving bid documents when they're ready, but then the school committee approves everything else.
When is our next cost estimate?
Joe, do you want to pull up the schedule?
Yeah, the, the next round of estimation would happen once schematic design is, is nearing completion.
I, I think I would want the school committee to be understanding what we're hearing from Williams and what the next cost estimate is. So I, I'm not ready to, to give the subcommittee number two on the decision points, but I'm sure.
No, no, no.
Okay, sorry, that's what, no, that's what I thought you said.
No, no, the only part was to include authorization for number three. So when we get to that point, we're thinking the school committee is not going to want to go through, you know, hundreds of pages of bid documents.
Right.
Joe, go ahead.
I, I, I think the this, the most efficient way to use this agenda item in the way it was intended would be to authorize the track and field project committee to move ahead as it has desired with moving from conceptual design to schematic and expect the committee to come back to the full school committee once schematic design is ready for approval. So then it just moves it forward one step and that's an authorization for that committee, which I think is all.
Okay.
But.
So then you might want to retract the first motion, which was the recommendation of the track. I mean, it's, it's really, it gets to the same point, but it's different language.
I, I would love to retract my first motion. Or maybe I seconded that.
I think I might have moved it. So I will retract the motion.
Okay.
And I will, Joe just said.
Is everybody clear on that?
So you moved the new motion. Do you have a second on that?
Now, now, now second since she was kind enough to second my motion, I will second hers.
Say it again. I'm sorry. I, I'm not clear on what the new motion is.
Move to authorize the field and track project committee to move from conceptual design through schematic design with the expectation that the school committee will review and approve the schematic design once it's complete.
Nothing about number three right now? That's the next vote?
No, no, we'll wait till later.
Okay. I'm good.
All right. So thank you for that solution. Is there further discussion or Aaron, is there anything you want to add that we haven't covered? Yeah, Joe, go ahead.
Aaron, I think, I think Aaron needed to jump off.
Oh, okay. He's not with us. Gotcha. All right. Do you want to stop screen share and we'll just, I just want to make sure that everybody is good for where we are. So we could go ahead, Christina, we could go ahead and vote and then have public comment or whatever you want to, you want to do that?
Yep.
Okay. Do you want to call the vote or do you want me to?
You can.
All right. So we'll do roll call vote to approve the motion that is currently on the table.
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Green, I.
Miller, I.
Great. Thank you. That motion is approved unanimously. So I'll turn it back to you for public comment.
Okay, so next up on our agenda is public comment. I do not have anyone signed up for public comment. So I can't tell if there's any public out there, so I'll just pause for a minute to see if anyone wants to make comment. You can sit here in silence. I do want to say briefly while we wait that I think the Mount Grellaw campus right now, I haven't seen either of the elementary schools, but I've seen the high school and middle school and everything is so luscious and green and it's been so pretty. And all of the I Berkshire photos, it's just this gorgeous green field. I think it's the prettiest campus in the county, but maybe bias. I just wanted to say that whatever they're doing, they're doing an amazing job.
Okay. Shout, shout out to our grounds team.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, next up on the agenda is the approval of minutes, I think. Do, so do I have a motion to approve the September 8th, 2022 minutes?
They're moved.
Julia moves. Do I have a second?
One second.
Carrie seconds. Any discussion corrections? Okay, hearing none. All in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. So next up on the agenda, we have principal updates and we should be hearing from Lanesboro Elementary School's principal, Pratt.
Good evening, everyone. Hello. Sorry, I'm not in my usual shirt and tie. I came from soccer practice. So there has been an anonymous donor who has contributed $3,336.30 to Lanesboro Elementary School in order to put the grade three students on a field trip via coach bus to Plymouth Plate, Pato, which I think is the former Plymouth plantation. That's, and so the donation pays for everything except for a brown bag lunch, which where the students will bring their own food and the cafeteria can supply food for those who are unable to bring it. And this, you know, the teachers have been doing a great job building up to this with their pre-teaching and getting ready for this and getting students prepared to go on this trip, which is next week, I believe. So I'm hoping that you all will vote to accept this donation.
Yeah.
I was sorry. I was going to make a motion to accept the donation.
Great. Julia, make, would somebody like to second Julia's motion? First, second. Any discussion?
Sorry, what's the educational like agenda for the for the trip?
So you'll be like the read the standards of how they align or so it's so.
No, I was wondering what's the, what's the plan?
It, it, so it, that it aligns with the grade three social studies standards that allow students to learn and explain the diversity of native people present and past in Massachusetts and the New England region. As well as students will be able to explain who the pilgrim men and women were and why they left Europe to seek a place where they would have the right to practice their religion, describe their journey and their government in their early years and analyze their relationships with the Wamapong, maybe I said that wrong. And Abernac.
Panowag.
Yes.
One Panowag.
People. Yeah. So Ms. Roder and Ms. Simansky have been working really hard to get the students doing legwork so they already have like a basis of knowledge before they go to the museum.
Might we be able to get a report back next month on how it went? I mean, not, you don't have to do it yourself, but just love to hear how, how it went.
Of course.
And thank you to the anonymous donor.
Absolutely.
Well, created to contribute to education in this way. It's pretty awesome. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Green, I.
Malloy, I.
Miller, I.
Thank you. That motion passes. Uh, next up on the agenda is the wellness committee update. So again, I will Nolan will drive that discussion, I think.
Yeah. Um, so the wellness committee reconvened in the middle to end of September. Uh, the big focus was to kind of reexamine what our, what our current policy is. And that was kind of our driving task was to review our policy to make sure it's up to date with the USDA guidelines. Um, so we decided to break into two subcommittees. One is focused on the educational piece, the physical education and nutritional health education. And the other is focused on the nutrition offering, like the lunches and the like, the food policy within the schools. Uh, so each subcommittee is going to meet between now and our next meeting in December to review those specific parts of the policy to see what needs to be amended, what needs to be updated. Um, and then bring those suggestions and amendments to the wellness committee. And I think our meeting, next meeting is to full group meeting is December, mid to late December. So that's where we're at. So one question I have is the wellness policy, does that need to go through the policy subcommittee when we make changes or is that kind of its own leg branch thing?
I, I would suggest Nolan, it, it is its own. It is its own standalone piece, but in, in some ways, but I would also suggest the, the policy and governance subcommittee meets with some regularity. I, I think it's always good to run things that have a district wide impact through the through the policy and governance subcommittee. Once, once your folks have completed their work.
Sounds fantastic.
Good. Thank you.
Do we have any sense of what percentage of our students take advantage of the school lunches at this point or do, will we get those numbers sometime?
We can get those. We, we have a, we have a good idea from year to year, although these last couple of years have been very different. But, but we can provide that information to you, Carrie. We, we, that would actually be a, be reporting out on the October 1 report around student demographics in November. We could, we could certainly work to include that piece as a, as a part of that bigger enrollment report.
Any other questions for Nolan? Thank you so much, Nolan.
All right, have a good evening.
You too. Next up, we have director reports and the director of special education services, which is Patrick Priester.
Good evening. Joe, can I get a sharing access?
You should be all set. When, when you click share screen, are you getting a message that says you can't?
Okay, no, we got it here. Share. All right, can we see the presentation? Thank you, Julia. All right. So here we go. So we're doing a special education update for October 2022. Started here. So the first slide focuses on the number of IEPs across the district. If you take a look at Mount Grellaw Regional School, their numbers have gone up, uh, you know, over 10, which is kind of significant from year to year. Um, one of the reasons I believe that is, is because the seventh grade class was west, came from Weston, Mount Grellaw was kind of a big class as far as numbers in our, in our department. Um, and then Lanesboro, their numbers are up quite a bit and across the district were up over about 12 IEPs. So you can see the hard numbers there. And I'll try to break it down by school, um, so you can take a look. So last year, FY22, we had 74 students at this time on IEPs and this year we have 86. Again, I think a lot of that is increasing enrollment. And also that seventh grade class was pretty big as far as IEP numbers. And our referrals have gone up too. Uh, Lanesboro, the numbers have gone up quite significantly from 36 to 45 from last year at this point to this year. Again, we've really did a good job of trying to identify students through our child find process. Um, we have noticed a number of students that come in and with speech delays, especially the younger students. So we're trying to address that and the best way to do that is to give them services early on. And Williamstown Elementary, the numbers have actually gone down a little bit. Again, I like to credit that to that the sixth grade class from last year entered the seventh grade this year and it was about 15, 16 kids. Um, and it brought the numbers down a little bit of Williamstown. And just to break down the percentages from FY22 to FY23 across the district, the number of IEPs pretty much stayed the same, even though the number went up. And I think that's in correspondence with the number of enrollment. So our hard numbers have gone up, our percentage has stayed about the same. Except for Lanesboro, that's pretty significant jump there, seven percent. I'll leave it on here if you want to take a look. All right. So as far as staffing goes, pretty much the same. We made a few changes. I'm not going to read every staff member for you, but I want to note the changes. So in Williamstown, we've added a board certified behavior analyst or BCBA to improve some of our behavior programming and he's really taken off and it's gotten his, you know, started working with the students and he's worked with, and we're starting to see improvements as far as their ability to adapt to our programs and the classroom environment. We've also added a social worker there. Well, you had a social worker, but that's changed to a different person. Um, in Lanesboro, we added a BCBA that we share with Mount Grellaw. She spends half a day at Mount Grellaw and I basically half a day in Lanesboro, uh, one day a week. So and we may look at possibly growing our program in that area down the road. Uh, right now, we have someone that shares those duties among the two schools between Lanesboro and Mount Grellaw. Um, Mount Grellaw, again, the numbers stayed pretty much the same as far as staffing. You know, in recent years, we've added another social worker to our counseling program. We have also added a occupational therapist. So occupational therapists in Williamstown focuses primarily on Williamstown. And Mount Grellaw and Lanesboro share an occupational therapist who we were able to make that a district a full-time position where before it was, I believe, a point six just in Williamsboro. Some of the changes in our office, um, since last year, we've added a special education team leader, Destiny Hicks. We've been a great add to the department. And Vicky Winchell has just taken off and kind of taken over and it's really become her, um, her, her department as far as running the administrative and things in our world. So thank you, Vicky and Destiny for helping me through all this. Um, as far as special education update. I did not include in the hard numbers are out of district placements because they kind of skew our percentages. Because they're not counting enrollment, but that we counted as far as having an IEP. So I wanted to pull those numbers out. These include out of district placements, homeschool and services only students, service only students or students that typically are three to five that don't come into our pre-K program, but access uh, services and drive-in services or remote in special situations. We have seven elementary students and then 13 students that fall in this category. And out of district of students that we place in programs that's outside of our district, homeschool students or students that are homeschooled, but access special education services. Um, circuit breaker leading in July, our 240 and 262 rents have been recently submitted. Um, circuit breaker leading in July, uh, our two forty and two sixty-two rents have been recently submitted. We, one of the things I noticed when I took on this role that was lacking in the district was a district-wide special education procedure manual. Um, I went to the Leadership Academy a couple of years ago and this is one of the goals I identified for myself. And last year we began developing it and Vicky and Destiny really fine tuned it over the summer. Um, so we were able to roll that out recently and we're waiting for feedback from our staff. Uh, but really it's just about defining our processes, writing them down. Um, and it took a little extra long for us because. We do have some holdover processes from when there were three separate regions and we wanted to respect that in each building. So we, you know, we kind of took the extra time to go through that. And really define that. So we're not changing work conditions um too greatly for people. So that took a little time. And Parents' Right to Know night, uh, we are again going to share this with uh our local North County districts. Uh, so the main sponsor for the October twenty-sixth day is uh North Adams Public Schools. And then we've agreed to sponsor one in the spring that will invite our peers and the this um the local districts to join with us. Um, and that's it for the PowerPoint. I'll leave it up in case anyone has any specific questions. I'd like to ask the committee if anyone has any questions. If you want me to flip to a slide, just let me know.
Two questions. Um, one is the speech delays in our younger kids. Do you think that that is COVID related or do we have any sense of why that might be higher right now?
Yeah, I believe it is COVID related. We're seeing a lot of articulation. Um, I wonder if that has to do with the masks and students not, you know, going out. Um, socially the past couple of years like, you know, we have previously. So we're working to remedy that. But yeah, I believe it's COVID related. And we also, we did get an influx of new people moving to the area. So that that's a part of it too.
Okay, and then um Parents' Right to Know night, um. Would it be helpful to maybe talk a little bit or just a brief summary of what what that is so that people know?
Yeah, so we invite um someone typically from the Federation that will present Parents' Rights to Know uh. So basically, the presenter will go through all the rights that a parent has through the special education process. And really define for them, you know, what they what they should know. Um, what they can do and what districts can do throughout this process so that we can support each other. And how to resolve conflict as we do and have a lot of conflict in this field. So. So that's part of it.
Is that mostly for for parents who have kids um with I E Ps or parents who think maybe their child. Should have an I E P or they're considering approaching that. I'm not sure what the target audience is.
Yes, uh, it's it's just general knowledge for for anyone um that wants to learn about the special education process. Especially parents that have concerns that want to know what their rights are as far as uh entering in that process and how to go about it.
Okay.
And we'll be, our our department's going to be sending out information to our special education families um in the next week or so about this. Any other questions? Okay, I'll stop share. Uh, thank you. Oh, sorry, Julia.
You don't need to, you don't need to share necessarily. Um. And I, just because I read it in the news, um, I don't know if others saw the um really terrifying. Article about abuse in residential programs. Um, and so I just wondered if you could share a little bit about um the out of district placements. What kinds of programs those kids are in and what the school does to confirm that they are. You know, healthy, good, safe places for our kids.
Oh, we, well, typically we always go out and visit the program before we refer a student there. We meet with, um, they'll send out like. You know, the administrator on duty, uh, will do a walkthrough with the families to determine if it's a good fit for the student or not. Um, most, all of our students are typically in day programs, so they go home at night. We do have one student that isn't a resident. Um, so what we'll do is we'll reach out to the program. And we have periodic meetings with them. We get, you know, periodic updates on how he's doing. Um, or our students are doing these programs. Um, so that's, you know, we just monitor from afar. It's been kind of difficult through COVID. Because of all the restrictions on visitations and visitors and buildings, uh, but we're getting back to a more normal. Process there. So I've actually gone out to a few of them already this year and plan on trying to at least touch base with with one during the school year and. You know, if we can get out during the summer and we have one more time, we try to do that too, because often these programs go all summer long.
Are are they programs that have been somehow approved by the Department of Education?
Yes, yes. Uh, if the program's chapter seven sixty-six approved, that means it's approved. Uh, through D S C and we can actually, you know, get funding back um through our circuit breaker.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
You're welcome. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Okay, next up on the agenda is the review of the superintendent evaluation. Um, and I just want to start by. Um, thanking Jake for his extent extensive and thoughtful self-reflection document. Um, that made this overall process so much easier. Um, and thank you to the committee for. Fulfilling one of the biggest charges that we have as a committee. Um, and reflecting back on this last year as it relates to the goals that were set for Jake. Um, and Joe, thank you for converting that evaluation form into an electronic file. Because that made compiling the data that came back from the committee a whole lot easier. So thank you. And the, I just want to say that the superintendent evaluation is so different from your typical employee. Evaluation process. Um, it's odd that we have that we do this in public. Um. Uh, but I really appreciate um all our efforts in making this happen and tolerating me. And my inexperience in this space. Um, my plan is to present the summary page that you've all had. Um, and it's in the packet. Um, and then I'll open it up for discussion. I presented this compiled summit of evaluation to Jake a couple of weeks ago. Um, so he had time to sit with it and as soon as I shared it with him, I sent it all to you. Um, so hopefully you've had ample time to look at it and um look at all of the comments. From your fellow school committee members. Um, I don't plan on reading all of them, um, but I will just go through. The overall evaluation and then open it up to Jake and to the committee for further discussion. So overall, I'm going to lose your face, Jake, because I'm going to open up this document. So I'm not going to see you guys. Um, I, the, the. Report was wonderful and um we found Jake to have performed proficiently. Over the past year in his overall summit of performance. Um, I think it's important to note that a rating of proficient means that his performance is understood to be fully satisfactory. This is the rigorous expected level of performance. I want to highlight the word regal rigorous. In a letter grade, this might be an A. Exemplary indicates that he significantly exceeds proficiency. And can serve as a model of practice regionally or statewide. In a letter grade, that might look like an A plus. In assessment of progress towards goals, six out of seven school committee members felt he met his professional practice goals. With one member providing no indication. Six out of seven school committee members felt he met his student learning goals with one indication of significant progress. Six out of seven school committee members felt he met his district improvement goals with one indication of significant process. In assessment of performance on standards, um. Seven out of seven school committee members felt he was proficient in standard one, which is instructional leadership. Seven out of seven school committee members felt he was proficient in standard two, which is management. Um, and operations. Seven out of seven school committee members felt he was proficient in standard three, which is family and community engagement. And seven out of seven school committee members felt he was proficient. With one member, I neglected to say in those last other two, one. Member additionally selected exemplary. So there are actually eight marks um in standard four, which is professional culture. Um, and then in summation, I wanted to quote. Um, one of the committee members and vice chair Carrie Green, who I believe described Mister Dr. McCandless's performance best. When she said, we are better off today than we were two years ago, not since the eminent Dr. Clark has. Mount Greylock had a leader more respectful, more honest, more open to reflection, more focused on staff and students. More collaborative in his approach, more focused on the good of the overall community. I would add more humble. Sometimes it appears there is too much humility. But if the opposite of humility and graciousness is arrogance, I'll take humility. So we look forward to um Jake's continued work in our district and thank you very much for a great year, Jake.
Oh, thank you. And and if this is my opportunity to comment, I will, I will keep it short. Um, I I have been so. It's hard for me to 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 think that this is actually my third year in the district and um. I I have found every single one of the members that that both those that are on here tonight and and. And the couple of folks who weren't able to be here. Uh, the the day-to-day interactions and the day-to-day feedback and conversations are so helpful. This is, this event is helpful and I am appreciative to all of you for the. The the time and the effort and the energy that went into doing this so thoughtfully. And um so transparently. So I do thank everybody for their time and I thank everybody for just the the. Day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month conversations that helped me. Better understand my my role here, better understand how I can serve these these two towns that comprise the region better. And uh, and how we can improve as a district. So so I I just. And any, any thanks that come to me, uh, I would, I would for for for. Putting together my piece of this, I would return double to all of you for for the. Ongoing support and for all of the 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 good, the bad, and the need to work on included in this. Evaluation. So thank you.
If if I could just add on behalf of the policy committee, since Jose's not here and I know there's a report later. Um, but we did, and Julia, maybe you could talk about this more. We did um work to codify the process. Um, in the Policy and Governance Subcommittee along. Jake, I don't remember if you were there. Were you there for that discussion? Okay. Um, but we did um talk about. The timeline and, you know, so we'll, we'll talk about that more as a committee at a later date, I guess, but um. It was um was a good discussion and. I think it was um. Helpful to have the um format for the survey, you know, for filling in. I I find this, and I said this in a policy meeting um. Earlier, I find the M A S C process for evaluation to be arduous. Um, and very complicated. Um, I think one thing that we didn't quite understand as a committee was that there were certain. Indicators, um, and those were the ones that we were to focus on. Um, Jake had them in his self-evaluation, which I. Again, also agree was incredibly helpful. Um, I think there are ways to make the form a little more helpful. Um, just including the goals and the indicate highlighting the indicators, whatever, but it. I agree with Christina. It looked like all the committee members um were incredibly thoughtful in their comments and. Um, Jake, I just loved your self-evaluation. So thank you for that.
Julia, I see your hand up and then Steve.
Um, so I. It was wonderful to read how we all can see uh the value that Jake is bringing to our district. Um, and I appreciate that, well, a few things. One, this is an arduous process. It is also what. The district has to do for all the teachers, um, I assume still, and so and other administrators. So I think it's a window into the work that the district is doing to um. In ensure that we have high-quality um teachers in front of our students. So just a quick aside on that. Um. I I wanted to say a couple of things. Um. One is, I I understand Christina's point about the and that, you know, that A um proficient means an A. Uh, and I just want us to reflect on the fact, I actually don't even know who Dr. Clark was, and I've been around in this district for twenty-some years. So if the eminent Dr. Clark is the last time we felt like we had a leader like Jake, he's an A plus. So I just want to name that. And I've I've known a lot of administrators and he's an A plus. Um. And I would also say, um, because I'm the one person who didn't rate him as proficient as meeting goals. And I I really just want to name uh publicly in case there's ever a question about that. I didn't have a problem with that. I was really just trying to be um realistic and truthful. Uh, I did not have a problem with that because I understand what he was doing towards making progress. Um, and believe that uh there's a lot of stuff that happens in the year and sometimes those things aren't the only thing he's working on. And so. Um, I just, I just wanted to name that. I think he's an A plus and that's the most important thing to know.
Thank you, Julia. Steve, I saw your hand up. Are you still there?
Uh, yes. So first off, I, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to, you know, first say, while I appreciate the extremely detailed, helpful. Write-up that Jake gave us, I'm reminded of a great quote, if your experiment needs statistics, you did the wrong experiment. Things are just so clear, looking at the interactions in the district as to the value. That you're bringing every day from yourself, from your team, from the interactions you have with the staff and the teachers. And I just wanted to. Uh, just to share these words, uh, similar to what Carrie was saying, you had put in your. Your statement, are you better off now than you were four years ago? And amazingly, in the midst of a pandemic response. I would say the answer is unambiguous to you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina, may I? I I I thank you all for those individual comments and I I'm curious as to who Dr. Clark is too. So I hope at some point we can get a history lesson. I I believe I may know, um, but I I would like.
I'll send you. Actually, when we were doing, I was, I did some research. He was, he was a teacher, um, and then he became, I believe, uh, principal. Um, he was a teacher when I was. At Greylock in the seventies, um, beloved and so respected. And um, I I think there was a quote that I took from an article from the House of Local History when we were starting. Envisioning of the school project where he talked about Mount Greylock as a lighthouse school. You know, one that attracted teachers from all over the country because of its quality. Um, and I, you know, talking, you know, Julia's reference to an A plus. You know, when I think of who the models are for superintendents across the state and across the country. I couldn't think of a better model. So, yeah, it's right, it's true. Our 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 proficiences don't really reflect. How we, you know, I think we were hampered by the humility of your self-evaluation.
I, uh, oh, well, that, thank you. And I I I would just say. But A, I have no interest in going around to the rest of the county or state or anywhere to share my wisdom. You know, although that with five minutes out of my day, I could probably spare to share all of my collected will wisdom. Um, Julie, I do want to say, I I think all of my goals that's as submitted were were two to three-year goals. So so I totally, I I would, I would, I think probably. Make ninety percent of them as still, still working and in making progress. Uh, and then just wrapping up, I I. I got to join an extraordinary team when I was offered the opportunity to come and serve in the school district and. Uh, and I'm very grateful for that. And I'm very grateful for that team, both the, the faces that are here from the school committee, the elected side. And really on the professional side too, and the colleagues that I get to, to come and work with every day. I, I do hope that, that this, so I'm, I'm grateful to all of them and to all of you, as I've already stated, because we're. Very little of this is a solo act and, and. And so as, as, as a, as a, as a member of a team of leaders, I'm very grateful for the team that was, that was assembled here and very grateful for the folks that have joined us since, since I got here. I, I would like to. My contract with the district is, is, does run out in, in June of this year at the end of the year. I, I hope that we can use this. This evaluation as a, as a catalyst to have a conversation about. Moving forward as a district, because I, I see. So much, so much. Every district has a ton of work left to do. I, I, I can see a lot of work we still have in front of us here, but. My heart really leaps at the, at the thought of actually getting to do that work here with, with this group of people. So. Again, thank you all.
Just on that, just on that point, though, you, you mentioned the, your interest in a six-year contract in. Your self evaluation, and I wonder if we can get that on the agenda soon, because I think you have a lot of committee support for that.
Yeah, I, I, I hope it was not too bold to use. My self evaluation as an opportunity to say that, that I, I think it does serve communities well and serve the students that we all care about well. To. If, if there is a relationship that is working, the, the. The disruption of having new people coming in at that space on the organizational chart or many different places on the organizational chart. It really brings some value to the people that we're trying to serve. So I, I would, I would welcome that conversation on the agenda for, for the November meeting. So thank you, Carrie. Thank you all.
Thank you. Steve, you have your hand up before we move to the next item?
Yes, I'm, I'm not sure if you were looking for your people to comment on the six-year contract, but I would strongly support putting that on the November. Agenda, and I think this is exactly the way to do it. You were being transparent. We are letting the community know what we are considering.
Julia.
Do we need to vote to accept that evaluation? I.
I don't.
I know we all contributed to it, but there's certainly a world in which we could have disparate views that were put into one document. Are we, do we speak with one voice?
We don't have any part, do we have any part of the document that says the committee's view is the following? Or do we just have a statement of summary of what the committee did? And if it's just a statement of summary, I don't think we need to vote.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just a, it's just a summative evaluation.
I think the superintendent has the ability to reject it.
Yes.
But, you know, he's the one who asked to accept it because he asked, don't you have to sign it somewhere or something? Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is a signature and after. I, that, that will, that's not an issue.
And, and do you still report it to the state, all the evaluation through? I guess that's where.
Three PMS.
Three PMS, one, one rating is reported to the state. So I don't, that's where I guess I feel like we have to speak with one voice. Obviously, we're speaking with, we're, we're singing in beautiful harmony or melody or whatever, but I just want to, I, I feel like we should be speaking with one voice.
We can, we can certainly place on the agenda for November.
Oh, there was no vote. Right.
To, to have that vote. You know, as a. As a, I mean, it, it's. Yeah, I, and, and Joy, honestly, I'm, I'm trying to go back in my memory banks to consider how that was done before. And I, I don't recall necessarily a vote on the part of the school committee, but, but it's certainly something that's easy enough to put on for November. Sorry, Steve.
So I, I, I think I actually do recall a vote, but it was about four superintendents ago, so it was a while ago. And I think it was something like, you know, five members of the committee vote to give a proficient and two voted to give a needs improvement, something along those lines. I think it was just like an, I mean. I, I think to be clean, I think it would be nice to just have a motion, the committee accepts this report and the committee votes on an overall recommendation.
Like, like so much. Thank you for that, Steve. So like so much about the superintendent evaluation, it's like this Frankenstein's monster that you, that you. Build year after year with little collective memory of how the pieces went together the, the year before. So. This, this, as I said, we, we, we could put a vote around, you know, the overall. Summit of evaluation is this in November, and then we could, we could further codify that through the work that, that the. Policy and Governance Subcommittee has already started. So, so we have it in writing moving forward for, for future.
At a, at a minimum, whatever has to be reported to the state. Like that's, that feels like the part that we should make sure we're all clear on.
And what I, what I was definitely hearing is the, the person being evaluated is a, you know, if I, if I were sending that report tonight, it would say proficient. You know, that, that would be the, the. And, and probably what we've submitted over the last two years to, to not get the report continually bouncing back to us. For not being finished.
So, great. Thank you, everyone. Moving on, Finance Subcommittee Report. Carrie, do you have anything?
I don't think we have anything. To report other than we've been approving warrants and. Talking about what's being charged to what account and that sort of thing. We will have line item transfers at some point down the road. As Joe closes out the. The budget. For 2022.
Thank you. Policy and Governance Subcommittee Report, Jose is not here. I believe Julia is going to take the baton here.
There I am. Yes, I. I don't think I am to provide an overview of the whole meeting, but I will say, as Carrie mentioned, we did discuss the evaluation and how it might. Be. Codified for the process and also that training, we would all benefit from training so that we are all doing the same process. We had a discussion about the policy that's in front of you. And this is policy GDD for Support Staff Vacations and Holidays. You can see that. The edit, the key edit is to increase paid vacations to three weeks for years one through seven and four weeks for years after seven years. For staff and that is. Basically to stay competitive in our local labor market and ensure we can get the best candidates to take the job. I, the committee, subcommittee suggested we waive the first read of this policy and we'd like to bring it to vote tonight, but obviously that's. Up for discussion by committee.
Seems like.
I'll move to accept the revised.
Hey, Julia, move. Do I have a second?
This is Steve's second, but I want to ask a quick question first.
Okay.
Do we need to move on this quickly? Are we about to put out positions to hire? We, we don't have this, this will affect our ability, or is this something that could wait till the next school committee meeting?
Yeah, Steve, I'll, I'll tell you, to answer your actual question, it's, it's, there's not necessarily a sense of immediate urgency about this. The, the reality is, you know, full, full transparency. And, you know, Patrick mentioned Vicky joining us this year in the Special Education Office, taking over the, the secretarial duties of, of running that office. Vicky was good enough to join us from the same position in another school district that she had been in for a number of years, a significant number of years. And that's really the level of expertise we were looking for in that particular position and looking to replace and somebody that I think had held that job for decades here. We. I made an executive decision upon her hire to offer her to not have her come in and as a result of coming in, take an actual loss on the number of vacation days that she was. Going to have as an individual person from year to year. So we have, we have. I take following policy very seriously, but I. Could name three people that we have working for us right now that we actually waived this policy for. And that's where Jonathan and I said. Couple of days and said, you know, we, we ought to. We ought to look at moving this policy to be more realistic about the way we want to welcome people or, or convince people to, to come from one place to, to be a part of our team. So there's, there's no immediate urgency around the position and this, this is really limited. It's, it's a non, these are non-union positions. Tend to be clerical, secretarial, administrative in nature. And, and you, you all know. In, including our executive assistant in this office. Who, who recently newly joined us. Again, that's another individual for whom we waived this, this in order to make it just more attractive and to get to yes. So as a really long way of saying, Steve, it's not necessarily urgent, but, but it is something that we. I. The, the sooner the better, but, but there's not a sense of urgency around, we have to do this right now for a particular position.
Okay, I, I would say there's. No sense of urgency that it has to be done now and before the next committee. And given the fact that we have a highly proficient superintendent who is able to. You're entering to negotiations with people, I think it's much better to do first read and second read and just maybe have a sense of the committee tonight that we support this.
Carrie. So I think the. The sense of the policy committee, adding to what Julia has said previously, is that this is a revision to an existing policy. If this were a new policy, I would absolutely agree. But I think it's rather common to waive the first read of an existing policy. And. I think we felt as a group that it was more important to bring us in alignment between policy and practice and to do so sooner rather than later, so that we're not. Out of compliance with our own policies. We support. Dr. McCandless's negotiations, as you said, he's heavily proficient in it. But. We should be. Following our policies and, you know, there was a good reason not to, but I would support voting. It now if we all. Approve it.
I would support voting it now as well. I will note that Ursula had to drop at 6:55, so there are only four of us. So I think Steve seconded that motion. So do we have any further discussion?
So i- is a general policy that revisions do not require a first read, second read?
That's generally what we've practiced in the past.
I think it may also have been about the. Quantity of revisions. I feel like some of the policies we've recently looked at have been hugely different. And that, that may be a first read, second read, but this is one line.
And this is, you know, a minor policy, this is not. Covid policy that's affecting you. Are we going to be opening in person or remote?
The only other thing I might add is, can we please make sure people take their vacation?
That's, that's a whole nother.
I know.
Another level of conversation. I, I think these. The, the folks that we're thinking about relative to this, I, I think will.
Okay.
That they get a, they get a lot of peer pressure. And, and pressure from the, the people that they work with immediately to, to please take it.
Thank you.
Maybe whoever takes the most days of vacation loses one day next year.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Bo and I.
Henry, I.
Green eye.
I'm Steve.
Okay, that motion passes. Okay, next up on our agenda, our confusing, mixed up agenda is the superintendent report. Which also has a mix up.
Yeah, I, I have nothing specifically to report tonight and we are, we are going to move the awarding of the, the Mass, Massachusetts Association of. Super and School Superintendent's Award to December. We, we could hit that in November, but November is, most of you will recall, is our reorganization meeting. And we just felt, so I, I have informed the student and her family that, that she is the recipient of that award so that that can go on to college application material. And, but, but I. We're going to push the official public recognition of that into December, which, which is a nice bright spot in a, in a long cold month. So, so look at, looking forward to that.
Thank you. Okay, next up on the agenda is MASC, and I'm going to turn it over to Carrie, but she just disappeared.
I'm here, I'm just trying to cut down on the background noise and background and visual noise. So anyway. The MASC resolutions are in the packet. I'm going to the MASC conference and I'm going also as a delegate as well as a member of the committee. So we talked about the committee having an opportunity to approve or not approve some of the resolutions that are going to be voted on Saturday morning of the conference. So. I'm just wondering if anyone. Has a problem with any of the resolutions. I don't. Think, yes, we do have a vote on the agenda, so maybe I'll just make a motion. To approve the resolutions, if that's okay, and then we can talk about them.
I can second the motion.
Yeah, Julia.
So. I don't have a problem with most of them. The one that I. Didn't understand. And I'm trying to go back to where they all are. Is resolution. The one that was, resolution number four. Preserving local governance of Massachusetts schools. And. I absolutely believe in local governance. This is particular to three districts. That I. Know that the state has intervened with. And I have. Two concerns about. Voting for that resolution. One is, as the resolution points out, there's been no discernible improvement from the state. After the state takeover. But I don't feel that I understand the complexity. But after the state takeover, but I don't feel that I understand the complexity of those three districts. To say who should have governance responsibilities there. In general, I believe in local governance. But those are three districts with a long history of not serving students well. And so it doesn't make any sense to me to say, let's just hand it back to the people who have the long history of not serving them well. And that the state has greater resources. So I I I don't know the complexity, and I don't feel like it's my place to weigh in on that.
I'm happy to raise that question on the floor of the delegates assembly.
Thank you.
And just ask for some. You know, some backup information on that. Might be able to talk to some people also before the the vote.
Yeah. I I think in. In general, I'm not sure what they would have to say about, like, I don't know how you could get information in that situation. And obviously, you and I won't be talking, and by one little vote on this one committee and a whole state of committees, like, doesn't probably mean much. But I just. I don't think there should be anything that says that creates in stone how things should work. I just don't think it it's too complicated, and there's too many factors at play.
Thank you. Any other comments on these, on the set of resolutions? I also, did everybody get an update to the resolutions in the mail? I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I know something came. So I'll check it and see if it has anything to do with the one you're referring to, Julia. Steve?
Yeah, the the only other comment I would have is that, you know, given that we're now down to just four people. We do have a quorum and we do have the ability to vote on things, but I feel very uncomfortable voting with just four. Because one of the whole points of having a committee is to be able to discuss things amongst ourselves, hear perspectives and go, you know, I hadn't thought of that. This is one of the reasons why we send representatives to something like this. And so I would feel more comfortable just discussing amongst ourselves and saying, we have a general consensus, you know, support these. Here were some concerns that were raised, and I trust you to go to the meeting. And with that, is that enough for you?
I think that's fine. I'm happy to withdraw the. The motion. Julie, are you okay?
I can second the withdrawal.
Okay, great. It's a good idea. Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome.
The other one is not mine, I don't think. All state school committee and possible nomination. That came to us through an email from M A S C.
I I am foggy on, I I am not certain what that one is about. I apologize.
So it looks like the M A S C is looking for a nomination for an all-state school committee member. And essentially. We were asked if our committee would want to nominate someone to be considered by the board of directors.
Is this for District Ten? Was that what this was, which is the? Oh, that's the like the diversity.
Diversity, this is, I think this is different. The All State School Committee is established to annually recognize significant achievement on the part of local school committee members. This recognition is intended to honor school committee members who during the previous year have made a significant contribution to their community or their school committee. Either through specific action or as an inspiration and role model for their peers and constituents. The Board of Directors will annually select ten individuals who've been nominated by their school committees and recommended by a designated selection committee. So I think this is for. I don't know if this is for the selection committee or to nominate a member for the recognition. It's really confusing.
If it if it were for like a member to be recognized as an all-state member, it would be. It 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 would be nominating somebody now for consideration over the following year to be honored at this conference in twenty twenty-three, I believe. So I I am not clear on what they are, what the spec, what the specifics of this are.
Yeah, and what's really strange is when I look at this document, it says twenty twenty. I'm pretty sure we're in twenty twenty-two. Maybe, I mean, I don't know. It was a short week for some people and it messes everyone up, but I didn't realize. We're going back in time.
We paused because of COVID.
Maybe, maybe that's what it is. It's actually, that's entirely possible. I don't know. I guess we could explore this further and revisit it at another time, because I don't.
I think that's a good idea to revisit.
Yeah, I mean, there, yeah, there's only four of us.
Yeah.
Okay. So we're gonna, we really cut down that agenda item. So upcoming meetings. We have finance subcommittee meetings on October twentieth and November third. Our next regular school committee meeting is November tenth. Policy and Governance Subcommittee is November thirtieth. Field and Track Project Committee is meeting October eighteenth. And November first, I should point out somewhere in there are elections and everyone should go and vote. I think that, what day is that? Is that November eighth? What? Eighth? Yeah, okay, everyone vote. Um, okay. Did I miss anything meeting wise? Um, I do not have any other items for discussion, agenda requests. Julia.
Yes, um, so Christina and I were tasked with, at our last meeting, to come up with ideas for the retreat in January. And failed, each of us failed to remember that that was what we were tasked with. And so I just want to ask, as a potential future agenda item. And maybe it's not an agenda item, but in my mind, we need to be understanding what those ideas are for the retreat. And so. One that I have in my mind is training for us in some place that helps us understand not just our job, but also the work of the school better. So if that's D E I work, training, you know, I've been thinking a lot lately about being trauma sensitive as a school district. What does that mean for us? Like that, that kind of thing. So I'm just, I guess I'm asking. Maybe if there are people who have training ideas or needs that maybe you just send them to Christina and we think about that for a retreat.
Steve?
Yeah, I'm just always concerned when we're, you know, sending ideas and communicating outside of school committee meetings. So I'll just say one thing right now is actually getting ourselves inside the classrooms. You, if that's possible.
I always thought that that was not appropriate. Based on our charge as school committee members. It's kind of an overreach.
I think with what intent would we be in classrooms?
I mean, to me, it's. Trying to get a sense of just, you know, what is what is going on in the buildings. And you. It's one thing when you read reports, it's one thing when you hear things from students and colleagues, it's another when you're actually there. But it's going to be done in such a way that it is not inappropriate. It doesn't put anybody in an uncomfortable position. That's why I said, if possible. I don't know what things would be possible for school committee members to see. But I think it's very valuable to see what is it like to actually be a teacher in a room dealing with all these challenges?
Yeah, I just, I think back on all of our training, and I really don't think that's something that school committee members can do. I think, you know, as a parent, you can go to open houses, which are so fantastic. And sit and meet your your specific student's teacher as a parent. But I just don't know that it's appropriate to do that as.
I think we're supposed to rely on the superintendent.
Yeah.
Subway.
We we would need to revisit the M A S C guidance on that, legal guidance on that, and what our own policies say about. Visiting the school, and and that's really just visiting the school that's wouldn't even be addressing individual classrooms. So that's something I can look into. Christina, could I could I add one thing before we go relative to the last item, the 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 upcoming meetings? Just and I and I may have missed this when I had to step out for a couple of minutes, but just a reminder to everybody in the community that. The the meetings related to the construction of the new track and the new field are on Zoom. They are public meetings. And, you know, as as we tend to do traditionally with subcommittee meetings, we don't have a a space on the agenda for public input. But we would certainly welcome folks to to jump on those meetings and to watch and to listen. And to see the same things that that we're seeing as we're working to make those recommendations back to the committee. And and certainly welcome feedback from from the folks that that live here, that care about this, whose children and grandchildren. And neighbors and friends and nieces and nephews will be using this facility. That's a really crucial piece of our getting the best project for now. And for years into the future that we can. So just a reminder that those are, those are public meetings that are available to the public.
They're not necessarily all virtual. I think every.
Right.
So many meetings, we do try to meet in person, but they're still public. Yeah.
Thank you, Jake. Okay. Um. Would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Julia moves. Do I have a second?
Second.
Carrie, second. All in favor, roll call vote?
Bo and I.
Conry, I.
Green eye.
I.
This seven thirty-three and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I appreciate your time as always.